I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen on April 4th at 7:02 PM to order. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. May I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the purchase of real estate? Marcy moves.
I know, one of these days I'll be right.
No, I'm making a concerted effort to look at Marcy, but Sarah moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Okay. Okay, may I have a motion to return to open session? Marcy moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Unanimous? Okay. Next is the First Selectmen's report. Weekly COVID positivity as of Tuesday, March 29th was 3.5 down. We had that little bump the week before to 4.3. The U.S. Center for Disease Control and Prevention updated its recommendation to allow a second booster of either the Pfizer or Moderna vaccine. If you had the J&amp;J vaccine and the booster four months ago, you are eligible for this. If you had a different one, but you are 50 years or older and you had the booster four months ago, you are eligible for this. And if you are an immunocompromised individual, you are eligible for this, but I highly suggest that you check the CDC website for more information. We did have last week a COVID after-action committee of staff members that Kate formed, and we will be taking a look at the last two years to review all of the steps that were taken to protect the public as we experienced our first pandemic in our lifetime. A comprehensive review will provide us with an opportunity to create a best practice guide for the future. An update on Eversource, residents of Littlebrook and Littlebrook North were invited to participate in a discussion with myself, Wayne Fox, Director of Public Works at Gentile, and John Zagratzki. No, I'm sorry.
Zakowski.
Zakowski. John Zagratzki was not at that meeting.
Too many Jay-Zs. There should be a limit.
A lot of Jay-Zs.
I was on the meeting. Are you talking about the Zoom meeting?
Oh, yes. And Mike Burke was a guest on that as well, one of our Board of Selectmen. So the purpose of the meeting was to provide an update on the mediation taking place between the town and Eversource regarding the clearing of trees on the town Riedel Way. The neighbors were provided with information about the options available through mediation and the possible outcomes of those options. The following day, a mediation session was held. Initially, we met with all of the parties that are involved in this, and then we had requested an opportunity to meet separately. And that is common practice for the mediator to meet each party separately, which is what we did. What we did, we expressed our strong objection to clearcutting, as has been done in other towns. We also expressed our belief that not only do we want to retain trees, but at the same time have a robust vegetation program, which would call for the planting of additional trees and vegetation on property owned by Department of Transportation. The mediator is planning to meet with Eversource to discuss its position on the various issues and report back to us very soon. Last week, the Darien community experienced immeasurable tragedy and loss. As a result, many residents experienced profound grief. Ally Ramstek, Director of the Human Services Department, arranged for counseling services to aid children and adults here at Town Hall over the weekend. Dr. Adley made sure that counseling services were available through our schools, and the police department had appropriate support services available to their first responders. My heart is broken for the families. They are in all of our thoughts and prayers, and on behalf of myself and the board, I express my sincerest condolences.
Just a couple personnel things I wanted to tell you about our new zoning enforcement officer started this morning. His name is Herve Hamon, I'm hoping I'm pronouncing that right. Comes to us from Maryland, many years of experience. Parton Rec, Sandy Rich has been promoted to facilities supervisor, replacing Jim Flynn, who retired earlier this year. And our search for an HR director is ongoing. Scheduled closing date for the applications is next week.
Okay, thank you. Board liaison reports. We'll start with Mike.
Uh, no, we haven't.
Nothing from Mike? Okay, Sarah?
The HHR committee, the Henley Homes and Royal Building Committee, is moving along. And right now, the RFP for the architect is posted. The biz are due, I think, back by the 7th of April. Is that correct? I think it's the 7th. And questions are coming in, and they're being posted to our website. And the RFQ for the construction managers also going to be posted soon.
That has posted, and you're right, the architect opening is Thursday.
Okay, thank you. And we'll be meeting again this Thursday. Thank you.
So Sarah, Thriving had a, I watched the movie.
Oh, did you?
For...
Chasing Childhood?
Yeah, and they were having questions tonight, but was that the same time as our meeting? So how do we get a copy or...
I think it's on the website.
Okay.
They have said that that will be available to you on the website.
Okay.
So I'm hoping to be able to watch tonight's presentation.
So you had to sign up for the meeting to have access to the video. What I'm asking is, how will we have access to what's discussed at that meeting tonight?
I'm hoping that it's recorded. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm hoping. But I also think the video, you can actually just grab it on the website. That's my understanding.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll find out. Absolutely.
Okay. John?
No, nothing. I'm at the link one on doing an update for my IT committee, but we don't meet again until next month, so nothing to report.
Okay. Marcy?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to ask, Rachel?
Yep.
Okay. Kate, do we have any public comment?
No.
Okay. Okay, so first on the new business is to discuss and take action to authorize the First Selectmen to negotiate the purchase of real estate. We have discussed the possible acquisition of a portion of the property commonly known as Great Island in executive session. Great Island not only has a unique history, it is the last and best property of its kind that is available on the entire east coast of the United States. There will never be another opportunity for the town to control this property's destiny or to add an asset to benefit all of us like this for us and for generations to come. This summer, we looked back at 200 years of history, and we considered what our ancestors thought and how they felt and what they fought for. And I believe that 200 years from now, when people look at this property, they will look favorably on this transaction. I, may I have a motion to, oh, I'm going to read the motion. I'm sorry. So I'm going to read the resolution. Resolution of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Darien with respect to the possible acquisition of a portion of property commonly known as Great Island. Whereas property commonly referred to as Great Island is being marketed for sale by the Steinkrauss family, and whereas the Town of Darien has had discussions about a possible acquisition of a portion of this property, and whereas the property in which the town has an interest totals more than 60 acres, and whereas there has been discussion by the Board of Selectmen regarding the value of the property and the potential use of the property, and whereas an appraiser has been retained to evaluate the property, and whereas the property is recognized as one of the largest remaining undeveloped pieces of land in the area, and whereas any approval of such acquisition is subject to final approval by the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the representative town meeting, and whereas the Board of Selectmen recognizes that the availability of this type of land is scarce and wishes to pursue the possibility of its acquisition. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes the First Selectmen to continue to have discussions with the owners of said property in the hopes of arriving at a mutually agreed upon price. That is the resolution. May I have a motion to approve this resolution? Marcy moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is discuss and take action on a request for transfer of $14,244 to the RFC NRE for Police Station HVAC system. Chief Anderson, will you give us an update?
Certainly will. It's a pleasure to be here again tonight. I wish I was not back in the hot seat talking about HVAC as we've been talking about for the last decade. As this board knows, we've been chasing HVAC issues in our building almost since it was built in 2011. Back several years ago, we got a sizable outlay of funds to bring in a company to fix our HVAC problems once and for all, and we have not reached the finish line there as of yet. The original value of the contract with Automated Logic was $180,000, and since then we've had two change orders. One was 33.5, the second one was 33.793. As they go into our system, they're finding out that there's issues above and beyond what they knew about when they first quoted this project. At the end of the day, to get us over the finish line, and I'm going to defer to Tony Campanella from the DPW to give you the nuts and bolts of HVAC, that we need $14,244 to get us over that finish line, including the balancing that is required for the entire system reportedly to have it work.
Yep.
As designed.
So the last two components for this final change order, hopefully final change order, that's what we expect, is to create a system that's like a dynamic pressure system. So if you build a building previously, you would kind of take a snapshot of what you need to create positive pressure in the building, which is what is desired. And because it's a mix of old and new building, there's some movement, it's kind of changing. So this dynamic system will constantly measure pressure and will be able to maintain positive pressure in the building regardless of what's happening outside, what changes happened in the building itself. So that's the first thing, and the second thing is the balancing. So you can't balance unless you know you have positive pressure. In our situation, the positive pressure will now be kind of constantly monitored, and then the balancing is kind of a calibration of each individual register, and that should get us to the finish line. I will say, one of those change orders was, you know, we're working on the control system now. One of those was just for a rooftop unit, just a piece of, a giant piece of hardware that was kind of separate from what we're talking about today. But we expect this to, kind of, other than maybe some fine tuning and set points and things like that, which is software, to get us there.
What did we miss in the design of all this? I ask that just because this is a relatively new building.
Yeah.
And if there are any learnings, given the amount of construction that we're undertaking with these schools, is there anything you'd like to highlight that was the source of the trouble?
So I'm not sure about the original design, what was missed there, but when we went into this system, the, what we actually found versus what was on plans, we had to make a lot of changes. In one, in the dispatch room, we had one system, we had two systems fighting against each other. One would literally be calling for cooling while the other one, and the way they were designed, it was actually, they were working correctly, that one was calling for cooling, telling, and which would tell the other one to call for heating. And it was just, just, there was a lot of stuff on the plans that wasn't what was there. So it was a journey of discovering, you know?
The system is very high-tech.
It is.
And, you know, I wasn't involved in the building planning or the construction or the oversight of the building at the time, but, you know, Rocky Genovese was on the building committee, and his take on it back then was this system, you know, was too complicated. And, you know, I know Chief Lovello was told that this system's going to run itself, and the building will run itself. Well, it has certainly not done that. And pressurization-wise, we were fighting pressurization issues for several, I would say, three or four or five years to find out.
I was going to say, that's the other thing, is the permeability of the old part of the building and that gap of new to old was underestimated, I believe.
So are you confident that the journey of discovery, in terms of discovering these problems, is at an end?
I am. The company we're working with, we've worked with for many years, and they're really the industry standard, so...
This should be it.
I believe so. And as we've gone along, even with the mistakes we've seen, they've all been explainable to what, to what the plan said. This boiler was, this boiler was in series with this boiler. No, that's what the plan said. In reality, it was in parallel to this one. You know, there's a lot of that stuff that I think we're there.
Well, as we're in the discovery process, and obviously I've been here through the tumult that you've had to endure with this project, but I'd like to discover who dropped the ball. Because I think when you have a project and then it comes in, add a third grader or over a third grader, and you're talking about balancing and discrepancies, I mean, what's really between the lines? Like, were they an incompetent set of plans? And then once you went and looked and started doing the work, it was completely different as an architectural issue, or for one reason, so this doesn't happen again.
Correct.
When we have to do other projects.
Yeah. So like I said, one of those change orders, it was really unrelated to the control system. It's just the rooftop unit. There was a, there was a repair that was at a level that didn't make sense to repair. It made sense to replace it. But, you know, the price of the repair plus the age of the equipment. But listen, I wasn't there for the bill, and I don't want to go around pointing fingers. I can just tell you that the as-bills that we have were not as-built.
Well, that's pretty direct.
Yeah. As far as pressure sensors, right? For five years, they were telling me about pressurization to find out that we didn't even have any pressure sensors in the building.
Right. It was a snapshot of when it was built, and let's go off that data of seven years ago, and let's try to pressurize the building, and that doesn't work.
We tried negative pressure, we tried positive pressure. We went back and forth. Where the chief's office, the entire office had to be rehabilitated because the mold behind the wall coverings was as green as algae in the ocean. So we had to bring in a company to completely remediate all that.
And given what we discovered, that makes total sense that that happened. You know, given what we found along the way, so...
What's left that hasn't been looked at that we need to look at?
Well, in terms of HVAC, that's it. I mean, the, I think most of the other systems are working, you know, terrifically, the waste system, the plumbing system. We have had some.
The sewer system's working well? The waste is working well, Chief?
Which?
The waste sewer.
Yep, yep. We made a repair a couple of years ago. It's been, it's been, it's been spot-on.
We had one...
It's not how you would design it, but they've made changes that make it work.
Yes, yes.
So now, my potable water, I'm overspent on potable water.
Right.
Because of that jetter system that's required when it's so cold to keep the septic system flowing through the dark days of winter.
Yeah.
So we have to now, in the spring, we have to go back and throttle that amount of water going through because we don't need it now till October. But then from October to maybe March, we have to have that amount of hot water coming through to ensure that the pipes stay flowing.
Yeah, there's no question.
So is all this, do you actually still have time for police work?
Yeah, right?
I'm kidding.
As I often find of saying, they hired me to walk the beat and give out parking tickets. And now I'm here asking for money for HVAC and sewer systems, so...
And what that situation, there was a pipe that is under the, what's that area called?
The under and the overpass, the underpass.
The overpass, and it's basically flat, maybe even slightly backpitched. So it was, stuff wasn't moving through fast. So we put an ejector on, every, we set the setting, and it just injects and makes sure everything's moving. Ever since we put that in, we haven't had a blockage, but the water's gone up. And until we find, you know, we're searching the balance of the settings. We don't want to use too much water, but we don't want to have backups either, so I'd say that's been a success.
I told the HVAC company, right, I'm not going to let them get away until they can convince a layman like me that the system is working properly. I.e., I set the temperature in my office at 68, and for two weeks, it should stay 68, no matter what the temperature is, outside or inside, right? That's what we do in our homes, and it works. And they've assured me that they can get me to that point where our dispatch center can be set at a certain temperature, and it should not change no matter what happens outside. I don't think that's an unreasonable ask from HVAC professionals. So that's, from a layman, that's where I'm, that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the transfer of $14,244 to the RFC NRE for Police Station HVAC system request? Marcy moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Chief, would you like, next item on the agenda is discuss and take action on a request to transfer $15,000 to Police Station Facility Repair and Maintenance? Would you like to go over that?
Glad to bring that one forward, too. The board may know that in our line item budget for fiscal '22, we had $19,000 requested for general facility repair and maintenance. We tried to come up with a number that we think that will work, and this is basically for light bulbs or outlets that blow out, or unexpected motor repairs for ventilation on these, that kind of thing. We had two major projects that ate up my entire budget of $19,000. One was closed-circuit TV. Seven cameras went bad. We can't operate for accreditation purposes or just best practice without these cameras in the cell block or the booking area or the lobby. They had to be replaced. And the board knows that we've asked for a CCTV upgrade for the entire building. These cameras, that they did retrofit, they've assured us will work with the new system, so those nine cameras won't need to be replaced. The other major repair that we had to do was both the front main door, the glass door leading into the building, and our glass door on the side of the building that is the employee entrance for civilians. They're both equipped with pretty heavy-duty and substantial electromechanical locking systems, right? We don't often lock the front door, but we do have to have the ability in emergency situations so we can lock that front door, perhaps buy us some time if somebody's trying to get into the building that we don't want to get into the building. So that repair was over $9,100 for those two doors. It's just not getting new hardware. It's computer-driven, some of it, it works with our FOB system, so those are two significant upgrades, which now has left me with no funds for the rest of the fiscal year to do things that we still need to do, i.e. change out ceiling tiles when they assure me that the HVAC is not going to be leaking on my desk anymore. I want to replace the tiles because some of them are brown, and things just pop up. We need to put in a new outlet, because we get a new, like, for when we had to do it for our body cameras. We have to bring in an electrician. It's not inexpensive to do those kind of things, so I'm hoping I don't spend $15,000 additional for the rest of the fiscal year. I can assure the board that I won't spend a penny more than I need to between now and June 30th, but have to have some funds there available. I know there's a couple other things that are coming down the pike. I just got one today from the administrative lieutenant. I forget, it was around $1,000. I can't remember exactly what it was, but it was a building repair that's going to have to be done. Oh, it's in the dispatch center. We have three dispatch consoles, and they have, they rise, you know, so you can sit or you can stand. Well, that one has, one of them has, the mechanism in that has given up the ghost, and the quote was $1,100. I told them, should I get additional funds? We'll get it fixed. If not, we're going to have to put it in one position and sit or stand for the remainder of the fiscal year. It's those kind of things. It's just, I know it's the cost of doing business in an $18 million, 24-hour-a-day building. Some of these things, I wish they didn't break.
Just quickly, Chief, for people who may watch, when you have these items like the 9120 with the security cameras and the door issues, and before you go out and do those repairs, I imagine you pursue any, like, warranty claims that you might have for this equipment before actually having to expend your own funds, right?
That is true. There was a time when I was the administrative services captain earlier in this project of 10 years ago, that I did want to pursue action, and the administration at that time did not wish to pursue it. Not the administration from the town, but the administration of the police department. So any warranty claim on any contractor or builder is long expired of whether we could go back on them.
And I'm sure that you would do that, wanted the people who might be watching, and so they can understand the process, that it's not just, like any homeowner, before you actually go out and try and spend your money, that you try to pursue other avenues first.
That's certainly always an option that we look at, you know? Let me just throw out one small tidbit of additional information, that we have two boilers, and we have two large-size hot water holding tanks, right? Unbeknownst to me at the time, when they built the building, that life expectancy of those water tanks are only 12 to 15 years. Well, they built the building around the water tanks with no ability to get replacement tanks into the, into the, you know, area where they are. So we're going to have to do some serious retrofitting of, to try to put in a door with a header to get around, to get those water tanks in at some point, or we have to bring in some competent professional to redesign something that will work with smaller tanks that will fit through the door into that area and back where all our utilities are.
Yeah. Sometimes you hear that as an expression, you know, they built the thing around. That's actually what happened.
So Chief, were the, did the seven cameras, did they all go at the same time?
We did go for a little while with some of the outside cameras without getting them repaired, but the ones, I think, one in booking and one in the lobby and one in a cell, I think, went in pretty short order.
And then this $15,000, you mentioned $1,000 for one repair. Do you have other repairs that are helping you come up with this number that you know of right now?
Other than the ceiling tiles at this point, I don't know if we have anything else coming down the pike.
No, I think it's more of a projection, right?
Some of the things that...
Yeah, it's a projection to what you might need.
Yeah.
I just, you know, there's some things that I'd like to keep on top of, like sealing the cracks in the parking lot to try to extend the life of our parking lot. There's some serious cracks in there, too, because the parking lot heaves pretty, up two or three inches during the winter. Those kind of things, buying those kind of supplies. But I'm hoping we don't have major repairs, but every time I say that, a major repair comes down.
Right. It's never been a building where, you know, it needs little things here and there.
We just fixed a leak in the booking area in our hot water system two weeks ago, and now we have sprung another one in another part of the building that's going to require a complete draining of the system once again to fix that. Seemingly the copper and/or the solder that they used when they did this construction is just maybe not as good as the copper or solder you used 20 or 30 years ago.
And that's not a huge expense, but it's just an example of the kind of these little things.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the transfer of $15,000 to Police Station Facility Repair and Maintenance? Mike moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to review and approve the minutes of the March 28th, '22 regular meeting. Are there any additions, edits, corrections?
No edits from me.
Okay. If there are no edits or changes, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Marcy moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Unanimous, Kate? Okay. Agenda review. Are there any topics board members would like to see on a future agenda? Okay, seeing none. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. Before we adjourn, I just want to remind everyone that there's a department heads meeting at 8:30 on Tuesday, April 19th. that there's a department heads meeting at 8:30 on Tuesday, April 19th. Looking at you, Mike. It's a terrific meeting, and I think I probably mentioned this before, but the information packets that are sent out before have a tremendous amount of information in them. So, when the department heads come, they're really coming to give an update on anything that's happened since they generated the report or anything that they feel needs particular attention at that time. So, if there are no objections, may I have a motion to adjourn?
We get those reports prior to that.
We do.
Yes.
Mike moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Meeting adjourned.